Okay, folks, it's 6:33. We want to get this thing started. I think it's loud.
Can you save the time one more time?
It is 6:33. And 15 seconds. So we call this meeting order. And Jill, would you give us a roll call?
Andy Wilson.
Present.
And Mark Fenison.
Present.
Joe Schei.
Present.
Kevin Flynn.
Present.
And very missing, Justin Olson. And he contacted me and let me know that he was going to be out of town. And he apologized profusely and said he won't miss anymore and he'll be back. I gave him all the updates. He came in and got all the information. And then the mayor also is out of town. And Kevin is mayor for them.
So we'll proceed. Now I guess we have a quorum so we can continue with the meeting. Mark, you want to hand a prayer for tonight?
My Father in heaven, Lord, we do thank you for this day and we thank you for the many blessings. We thank you especially for the blessings of the liberty that we have as American citizens. And we count this precious. We also thank you, Lord, for young men and women that are in harm's way tonight and are defending those liberties. We pray that you be with them, protect them, bless their families, take care of them. We thank you for those that have been brought out today to conduct the people's business. Lord, we stand in wisdom. We need your wisdom and direction. We pray that you bless us with that, that we might do that which is right for the people in the city of Vayre as well as what's pleasing in your sight. We thank you for this, in the name of Jesus we pray. Amen.
Amen. Joe, would you handle the pledge of allegiance?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
We stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, I get to give the mayor's report, so bear with me. There's two items. The update and the surplus police sequel. Casarok has finally picked up that one. It's gone. The white car is gone. So we have one left. And that one's in the works. Item number two, National Day of Service participation is needed. On September 13th, there's going to be a group of people from all over the place coming to Vayre and doing work. And we could, it would be nice if we had some volunteers from the town to help out. So if you know anybody that would like to help out, that has a weed ear, basically what they're going to do is go around, cut down all the weeds around in the roads to clean things up a little bit before winter. So anybody that would like to participate or volunteer, we can use the help. Okay, down to the agenda approval.
I make a motion we approve the agenda of Thursday, August 14th, 2014 at 6:33.
Do we have a second on that?
I'll second that.
Okay. Let's bring it up for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, agenda approved. Minute approval?
I move that we approve the minutes for July 24th, 2014, City Council meeting.
Okay, we have a motion by Andy Wilson to approve the agenda. Do we have a second?
I'll say it.
Second by Mark Fenison. All those in favor?
Aye.
Minutes are approved. Voucher approval?
I move that we approve the first half of August, $64,013.28.
Okay, we have a motion to approve it. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Joe Schei. Bring it up for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Committee reports. Park Board, you're on the floor, Steve.
We had a meeting last night. And the only thing we came up with is we've got a new fellow that's interested in becoming a board member, Don Davison. He doesn't live in town, lives closer to Winlock.
So therefore he can't be on the park.
We have a problem there because he's within a mile of Winlock, so.
So he can't be on the park board then?
Okay.
Anything else?
No, that's it for now.
Make me out as a bad guy, huh?
Yeah, you are.
You should tell him Winlock wants people on their park boards.
Do they?
Yep.
Well, the ordinance is the bad guy. In the state, you have to be within three miles of the city.
All right, do we have any public comments?
Yes. Public comments, Steve? You're the only one that signed up.
Oh, public? No park.
Okay, so I guess no then?
Super. Unfinished business. Public Works position update. That position, there were four people that responded to the advertisement for the position. I think there'll be a final interview either this week or next week. And we'll go from there. But there are the four people that were, had sent in their applications. The one from Winlock seemed like the best. What was that name, Jill? I don't remember.
I can't remember either. I can only think of the other guy's name.
Well, that person.
That person.
But we have to have a final interview with them. And when that happens, then we can make a decision. But it looks, that's the way it's leaning right now. He's willing to work for the amount of money that we're willing to pay. And he's also willing to work the hours that we need. So that's the update on the Public Works position. Wastewater topics. This one I think everybody should be interested in. We had a meeting on the sewer plant improvement options. What was that, last week? And the consultants presented four systems to us. Basically, they start around $4 million. And then the Cadillac of the group was $13 million. So we can go to the, Jill, you have a recap sheet for us. It's the waste treatment alternatives and comparisons. You can go through, and if anybody wants to see this, it's in the audience right now. If they want to see my sheet, I'll give it to them because I can look at Joe's cover letter if anybody wants to see this. But they went through all the flows. They went through the comparisons of the discharge and the bodies of water, where we're going to go with it, additional filtration needed, the root options, a list of systems. What we came up with after talking with them, it narrowed down to two basic systems. One is an activated sludge system, which is, I think the cost was around $4.5 million. And the, both that system and the other system that we looked at was called the Blue Frog system. Because of state regulations, there's a lot of things that have added to the system that are going to cost us a lot of money. One of them is the state has new regulations coming out on copper. They have regulations on ammonia. They have regulations on mercury content. None of those we meet. The Blue Frog system said that they would be able to meet the ammonia requirement, which we're going to hold them on that and see if they can do it. The mercury and the, my mind went blank here. That's not normal. That is normal. Yeah, the mercury and the copper, we know there's a mercury problem, but they haven't even set the limits on copper yet, so why even consider it? There's no, they don't know where the copper's coming from or how to get rid of it. So you'd have to put in special filtrations. So what they suggested, they always suggest the expensive route, is that we would have to put in new piping from here all the way to the Cowlets River because the requirements there are less than the requirements going into the Olaqua. That's an option that's somewhere between $800 and $1 million. We talk like that's nothing. Well, to me, that's a lot of money. So I discussed this with the mayor. My, I've been around these kind of things. So we presented an option to the engineers, the consultants, and to ecology that possibly we might be able to phase some of this stuff in. They're very reluctant to even hear those kind of words. But we got some response saying, yeah, they might consider that. We told them, we just don't have the money. And we can't charge the people what they want us to charge for everything they want us to put in. So the Blue Frog system offers us some alternatives. We possibly, none of this is for sure yet. We're going to have to sit down and induce a lot of discussion. But there's a possibility we can phase the Blue Frog in, put in their new filtration units, aeration units, and take that as the first phase. And then see and test, you know, monitor that to see if it does what we expect it to do and what Blue Frog says it will do. The other thing they said we have to do is we have to rebuild Pond Number Two because it's only five feet deep and it's got to be 10 feet deep. So there's really no way around that. That's, we're going to be stuck with that. And we have to repair. They were talking about replacing the liner on Pond One. But I was in that business and you can, that's a PVC liner. That is repairable. So we could first run the units, clear the water up, then lower the level and repair the damage and then fill it back up again. And they require us to make some tests to make sure the liner's not leaking. But that could save us a million dollars. So I, my suggestion would be, let's try it. We got nothing to lose but a lot of money. So they took that under consideration or under advisement. And what we have to do now is make a decision. The other system is immediate. We go to the Cowlets. We put the whole thing in and that's the activated sludge system. And that's about $4.5 million. So there's really not a big difference. And if we have to go the full tilt on either one of the sludge or the Blue Frog system, if we have to go the full tilt, they're, they're so close it's not worth arguing about dollars and cents. But the advantage that we saw with the Blue Frog system is that we could have the possibility of phasing it in. And having that company work with us and bring, and try and reuse as much as what we have and save us a maximum amount of money. And if that would happen, we could possibly save over the bid price more than a million, million and a half, possibly $2 million. So everybody has to make a decision on that. But I, I think that would be, in my opinion, strictly my opinion. I think that would be the way I would go. It would cost us less money. Being rather tight, I would look at that way.
Yeah, Andy. I agree with Kevin with a lot of the things he's saying. I, the only thing is, I am against going to the Cowlets River because of the pump stations. And the pump stations will be in the slide zone. And sometimes engineers don't think about little things like this. But those pump stations that they put in, they aren't cheap. So we might be in the process of that, that we do the pump stations often.
I agree with that analysis, Andy. I, I think that's something we have to look at. And that's why I looked at the other system. Because they didn't give us a rubber stamp and say, go right ahead and do it that way. But they opened the door and said they would consider that. How long we could stall it off, we don't know. But if we could do this, instead of doing this all at once and winding up with sewer rates comparable to Winlock in Toledo, maybe we could phase this thing in over a period of time, pick up more grants, and spend less money. And that's the way I thought about proceeding with it. I know we had a, we had a quote just on changing the aeration systems from Blue Frog. And they were like $8,500 a unit. Well, by the time they put all their little units around there, it was $55,000 or $60,000. That's a far cry from $4.5 million. So I, you know, I looked at that and I said, gee whiz, that would be nice to try and see how far up the scale we move in our filtration. And I just feel more comfortable doing it that way than putting us in debt. So I would like to open it up to everybody. Anybody has something to say, I'd like to hear it. Yep. What do you think, Joe?
Well, I agree with what you're saying as well. I wasn't at the meeting, unfortunately. But I've been looking through the paperwork. I don't see that they have a, they didn't talk about the Blue Frog system in here more than a minute in the minutes that you had.
That's part of the lagoon upgrade with filtration.
Okay.
That's what they call it.
Right.
Okay. So, yeah, I definitely willing to try some new things instead of just going for the full package like they want us to do.
Right, right. That's exactly the way I feel about it. We don't have many choices because we have to do something. We can't say, well, we'll just do nothing and just do a little bit. We have to, we have to do something that placates them and they agree that says, yes, we're working towards it. So that's what we have to do. We have to come up with a system that they're happy with. And we have to be working towards an end. But the consultants were pretty much in our corner when we talked about saving money and looking at things. They were more than willing to open up and get a little bit creative about how to go about this thing. I would just like to have the money that we spend on the consultants and just go ahead. But we can't do that. We have to meet the requirements that ecology and the health department put up for us. And, but we, we don't have to spend tons of money. We can work this through. And we don't have, if they put in the more stringent copper standards and the more stringent mercury standards, we're going to be locked in to go into the Cowlets. But that isn't necessarily something we have to do right away. So we could possibly stroke that out for a couple of years. I'm just saying this is possible. The, with this system, there's a possibility of phasing it in. So I want everybody to understand, now, we're not doing this by choice. I could, you know, I can't see coming up with the bills that other towns have. It would be nice if we can keep our rates as low as possible. And by this, if we do a small upgrade where we start meeting standards and it's not going to cost us an arm and a leg, that would open us up for more development because other cities have much higher rates. People would look at coming here because of the lower rates. And, you know, we don't have a large population base. So we got to be very careful what we spend. Are there any other questions on it? I'll quit flapping my lip. Steve?
I have a couple if I may. One thing that's come up both in conversations in other cities regarding sewer plant upgrades, and I think Kathy's talked about it during the workshops that were scheduled earlier this summer, is the idea that a city will find themselves less likely to qualify for certain funding sources, grants and loans and other things if their rates are considered too low to meet certain standards for upkeep and maintenance of the system that the grant conceivably paid for.
That's correct.
And as an example, Toledo, I think 2011 passed an ordinance that over about a three-year span raised their sewer rates by $20 a month, but did it incrementally every year. And, and so I was curious if the council has discussed or is willing to entertain the idea of increasing rates, not specifically for a loan they have to pay back, but simply to reach that, that point of qualifying for funding.
It has. This past year, we had a small increase. It wasn't to pay debts with. It was just to start bringing our rates up to where they should be. And I'll, I'll be the first to admit that when I was, my first year in city council, that was brought up. And I was adamant that we don't raise the rates because we didn't need the money. Well, that put us behind 3%. So how do we raise it to make us up, make up for that 3% we didn't do last year? So that just means we have to do 6% this year? So we have to, and we've discussed that. We have to incrementally bring ours up, but not 20% in a crack. That's why we're fighting to get the, a good system, but for the least amount of money. And then when we find out where we're going to be, then we'll work on the incremental increases. And we're also, because of the income line of the town, there's possibilities for grants and low-cost loans. But we would prefer to have, to borrow less money and do most of it in grants. But you only get so much in grants. And so then it's, if we were to go $4 million, the best shot we could, we could consider would be half. That's still a $2 million debt load for 250 homes to pay for. That's a lot of money. So we have to look at other options. And that's what we're doing. We're looking at other options and trying to push the requirements out as far as we possibly can, but still comply with what this health department and ecology says we have to do. We're sort of hanging on a thread. You know, we're working on a tightrope. We don't want to go too far in the monies because the people can't afford it. And we don't want to go too far away from what ecology wants because then they can come down on us pretty hard. And we don't want that to happen either. So it's, we're walking a tightrope and we all understand that. Did I cover that well, Jill?
Can I make one comment?
Sure.
Just that in our budget, the last two years, we have been accounting for this exact thing that you're talking about so that we don't have to do a huge $20 or $30 or $40 increase all at one time. So we've been incrementally increasing them slowly. And then also in our 15-year projection of our sewer program, that also is the incremental payment increases so that, like you say, so that it's not that, that big jump. And so we have been planning for that, knowing that this is going to have to happen. And so we've been planning for that, getting started, planned starting two years ago. So I know people don't like the $5 and $6 increases, but like you said, we're dealing with it because it's better than $20 or $30 increase all at once, so.
And by having a slow increase on a regular basis, when they look at that from grants, they realize we're addressing the problems and we're not blowing out of the consideration saddle because we don't pay attention to what's going on. And this city has been neglected for a very long time. So it's, it's revamping itself. And it's, there's so much revamping and it has to be done. It's just take, it's just going to take time, and so.
And if, in the next few months, the council selects a specific option that they want to move forward with and the engineering process begins, a lot of the grants I understand aren't necessarily available until the project is shovel-ready. And it may be the city's lot to take out a loan for engineering. No?
We've already got funding for all the engineering.
So that's all covered?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
You can never tell that down the line that we're going to do this process. There might be grant money that's available, but you don't know at the present time. But there's very possibility that grant money might be available when we get into it. But we're down the road yet.
So does everybody pretty much understand on that one? Okay. Okay, now there's also a bid request in our packet. Okay, the reason we don't have the entire bid request here is because it is very thick.
196 pages.
Yeah. So this is just an overview of what it's about, so everybody understands. And all we have to do tonight is give the city permission to solicit for bid, the project.
Approve the advertisement.
Yeah, that's right. This advertisement.
This is the advertisement.
We have to approve this so they can advertise for bids. That's it.
Do you need that in a motion? I make a motion to, to approve the invitation to bid for the Manhole Coating Project.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor for the Manhole Coating Project. Do we have a second? One second. Second by Mark Fenison. Bring it up for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Okay, this is, this part of the meeting is going to be a public hearing. So it's a scope change of the CBD project to include low, moderate income residential side sewer repairs. So when, we were given a grant to cover the city's portion of it, what is it, $700,000 and some thousand dollars. And so what we're doing now, we've got permission to change it, but we have to bring it before the city and have a public hearing and answer any questions about it. So does anybody have something they want to discuss about this?
Kevin?
Yes.
One thing that just keeps ringing in my head is that I think, I know with other hearings about this, they've required that we let people know this is the CDVG funding. So I just want to be on record of saying this is the Department of Commerce, Community Development Lock Grant that we got. And because we wound up not needing as much of the money to do our portion of it, we have asked that we could use a significant portion of it to help private homeowners with their side sewers. And you guys probably have all been hearing about that. And so the Department of Commerce requires, like he said, that we have this public hearing so that you can make comments if, if you choose. I think that covered all the things I was.
Now, do we, because of the public hearing, do we have to state the time and start? State the time?
It probably wouldn't hurt.
The public hearing started at 6:59. Does anybody else have any questions on it? Andy?
I got a question. I've had people come to me, they don't meet the low income. How is it going to be enforced by a contractor coming on anybody's private property and telling them, yes or no, you don't meet because your sewer is leaking? How are we going to address that?
I was on the understanding that houses built after a certain period of time were not being considered because they have PVC piping in and it meets all current codes. So there's nothing to worry about. The other houses that don't meet, if I understand this correctly, you don't have to do it. But if you don't do it, then you have to prove that your system is good. And if your system is good, you don't have to do it. But if it leaks, you have to pay for that inspection. So that's how I understood it. Is that pretty much it?
Yeah, that, that's correct. I don't know the exact particulars of how the ordinance that council approved would be enforced. We haven't gotten that far yet. But I don't think that there's going to be a whole lot of that to have to do because there will be more funding that we'll be working on further on when we get past the low to moderate income. This money is only allowed for low to moderate income.
But didn't they come up with some pretty high figures for low to moderate, $55,000?
Yeah, it's low to moderate income. So a lot of people are qualifying that didn't think they qualified. When I make them look at the chart, they go, oh, I guess I do qualify. So if you know anybody, encourage them to look at it again. But for the people who don't qualify for this, there will be other funding sources that we'll be working on, either grants or loans or combination of the two, that we'll be working on further down the line. We just haven't got there yet. And so strict enforcement of this ordinance isn't going to happen right away. It's going to.
This is why I asked, because I've had a couple of people that.
I know people panic right off the bat. The other question that I've, I've had a couple of people ask me about. We have nonprofit organizations. We have two churches. We have the Lions Club and we have the Mason Hall. And how are they going to handle that, do you know?
I haven't heard any talk about that yet.
They asked me and I told them just to sit tight and wait it out because if it doesn't leak, you're not going to be. because if it doesn't leak, you're not going to be charged. If it does leak, you are. And until you're questioned, then just wait. You know, don't stir up the pot until you.
Right.
And I told them just what you said, that there's going to be more funding down the road. And not to get too excited about it, we have time. Before, we thought it had to be settled this August. But the last report we had was we have two years to get it all settled. And so there's a lot of stuff that's going to happen. But the more people that get involved and tap into these funds, the better it's going to be for everybody. So just to ignore it is crazy.
Yeah.
Excuse me, Kevin, this is where, one of, was one of them that came up with the Masonic lot. How are we going to pay to have somebody come in here and smoke test us? And then we're good, yet it costs us $300 to $500.
If it's good, you're not charged. It's, it's, it's the city's responsibility if you're good. If you're bad, then you're charged.
Or the other option is to not argue the matter and just let them replace it. You don't have to argue. You don't have to have the testing done. It's only if someone is insistent that theirs is good and they want to prove it.
And the other thing is, if you say go ahead with it, then wait it out as long as possible, like Jill said, there's going to be more funding coming forward. And to jump in and do it, if it's not causing a problem health-wise or in your house or building, if it's not causing a problem that sense, well, then just wait it out and see what kind of funding is generated, and you might not have to pay for it anyhow.
Yeah.
You know, there might be funding, and that's, the whole goal for this, you're going through this whole process, is that we get it all taken care of, for the residents of town, and they don't have to pay. And that's our goal. Now, whether that, if we're able to do that or not, we don't know. But that's the objective, to find funding so people don't have to pay. But we have to be prepared, so.
Something that we've been trying to make sure that the community understands is that if you qualify for the money that's available right now and you don't fill out an application and we have to end up sending that money, that free grant money, back to the, to the feds, then if your place still needs the sewer replacement, then it's going to be paid for later on, possibly with grant money that's going to cause our sewer rates to go up because it'll have to be paid back. And so we're really trying to help people understand that if you, if you're going to need a replacement but you're not willing to fill out the paperwork to get the free service done, then it could end up costing everyone in the long run with increased loan money. So we're hoping to get some grant and some loan for the, the rest. But it, you know, with this money sitting, this pot of money sitting here that we can use, that all grant money, again, Stephen, it would be great to get a few more people because we haven't met our, hit our max yet of how many people can, can get the grant money. So we've still got room and we're, but we're running out of time. We won't be able to extend it a second time.
What's, do we have a deadline?
I believe it was the 28th.
Of August?
5th or the 28th of August, yeah, basically the end of the month, so.
So.
Couple of weeks.
A good headline for your paper coming up would be, that'd be Save Money Invader.
Sewer rates low, fill out the, get some free grant money.
Did you have a question, Stephen?
Do we have a cost figure for this test, for this smoke test or whatever it's going to be?
It would be a pressure test, and we don't. We don't. We haven't got that far yet.
But if anybody, the other thing is, if you have a house that's a rental, the income of, whether it applies to that house or not, is the income of the rental person, not the income of the house owner. So that's real important to realize that. So do we have any other questions about this? Okay, then we are going to call this public meeting complete at 7:07. Then we'll move on to new business. Council is to consider approval of a draft six-year transportation improvement plan. That would be this seat right here. Okay, Annie, you're on.
I asked Kevin about it, but it's been addressed and I am just, will be asked by somebody on the street again. On the item of.
Number nine.
To Park Road on F Street. That is a private road and has been for day one. And Kevin has told me that they're going to get the people to try to get a petition up so they would all agree, and then they'd have to go through the records and have their, their.
Their easements.
Paperwork changed that, that would be John Doe have to donate his 20 feet from so forth on one side of the street, and John Magni would be have to do 20 feet on. I'm sure that we would have to say it'd be a 40-foot street because of the fact that everything in the city is 40 and 80s. And I don't think we should take anything under city advisement unless it's 40 because otherwise we're going to have somebody beating each other at a 20-foot street.
Right. Well, the important thing is that the city has already considered that. It's in the process getting the people to sign a petition. But they're requesting the city to take ownership of the street, and they relinquish their ownership of that easement, and then it's become city property, and then we can deal with getting it paid and doing work on it. So it would no longer be a private drive.
I'd approve it otherwise for that, as long as we know what has to be done.
Okay, let's see.
Down the road, if.
This is our plan, and I, we would like to have a motion to accept this plan so that we can put it back in our records, and then this is what we're planning on for the next six years. So, but we have to have a motion for this, so would anybody be willing to put a motion forward?
I'd have a motion for it.
One thing to point out is that this isn't set in stone. This is just a plan, just so that the government, the state government and the people that have requirements on our city see that we're, have a plan and that we're, we have something that we can, we can work from. If we change and decide, oh, we want to do this street this year instead of that street or whatever, you'll be able to do that. I just want you to understand that this isn't something that, okay, this is what we have to do, but this is, this is a good plan, just to get us started.
We can always amend it, and we have to.
Well, that was my question. I mean, you have, you know, we're city funding on here and then grant funding, state funding, basically. I was like, well, how do we know we're going to have $100,000 in state funding next year to replace these streets?
Right.
You guys know something we don't?
No, no, what, the way it was explained to me is that when we do our budget this year for, for 2015, we'll look at how many, how much funds we have to go towards the streets, and then we would plug that in here. And then if we have any other grants that we are, we've already gotten or that we know we're going to get, we can plug those in as well and then see how much we still need in order to accomplish these. And then from that, we'll kind of just make an estimate for the next five years beyond that. But what this will do is it will help show any of the people that might possibly give us grants. We can give them this, and they will see what our plan looks like and how much we need. And it actually helps us to have this plan set out. So it's not filled in yet because we don't quite know how to fill it in yet.
Other cities are getting grants for all this kind of work, so we just have to start applying so we can get our piece of the pie.
But we couldn't before because we didn't have our plan updated, so.
So we need that, we need a motion on the floor to say we approve this as an updated plan?
I would second that motion.
We need, well, would somebody put the motion out there? I can't put it out there. You want to put the motion out there?
You what?
I can't put a motion out there, I'm mayor pro temp, so.
We need a number one.
I thought you'd put motion.
Fine, I will. I make a motion to approve the six-year transportation improvement plan as it's written.
A motion by Joe Schein, do we have a second?
I would second that.
Second by Annie Wilson. Let's have a vote on this. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? That one passes. Good job. All right, council will reconsider ordinance 2014-17, which would change the council meeting times. Joe, I understand you have a problem with this, so.
Well.
Can you work this out?
Yes, I had an alternative, and I know it sounds crazy, and I don't know if it's even workable, but I know the whole point of having the meeting is to do it outside of business hours to allow folks to make it to the meeting in time. Why not, why not we do it before business hours? Say 7:00 AM? I know it sounds crazy, but I, I just wanted to put it out there. I mean, it's out of the box thinking.
You're not, we're supposed to be open to the public, and half this public isn't going to be around.
I'm just, I'm just saying, I just.
Thinking outside the box.
I just wanted to put it out there.
From what I've noticed, that's really outside the box, outside the box.
Well, I was, I was thinking about it, I was doing, looking up, trying to figure out. I looked up like about a dozen different cities all over the country, and no one else does it early. They all do it.
That would make the.
5:15, eight o'clock.
Nine, maybe some like 10:00 AM, I think.
Yeah, a lot of people do it during business hours, but small cities usually do it outside of business hours.
I had a thought, and I don't know if this would solve your issue or not. Would it make any difference if we went, if we went back to doing them first and third Thursdays instead of second and fourth, would that?
Doesn't matter to me.
It doesn't, it wouldn't solve your issue?
No, it doesn't matter. No, this, this works. I mean, if we, if six is as early as we wanted to go, I mean, the earlier the better, but.
I can go anytime.
But I know that we're trying to, we're trying to, it's, it's for the public's benefit, not for our benefit.
Right. And the one council person I know doesn't get home till quarter to five, so.
Okay, well, that's a problem then.
Why are you changing it?
To help accommodate on the one, our mayor has conflicting schedules. And he asked if we could move it up a half hour, that's one of the reasons. It, it just makes it easier for his schedule. And I, I saw no problem with it, and so I suggested we just change the time. And they said, Joe, we have to deal with Joe. Not deal with him, but we had to accommodate whatever, it works for Joe because I know he has the Boy Scouts.
Right, right. But that's okay. We can do six.
Okay.
If that's as early as one.
So we need a motion. To approve this, we need a motion. Somebody going to put a motion out there? I can't do it.
I know that we approve ordinance, the change of time for ordinance 2014-17 to 6 o'clock, is it?
Yeah.
6 o'clock.
If you would please read the heading of the ordinance, I appreciate it.
Council consider approval of ordinance.
I'm, I'm sorry, no, we don't have, I don't have the agenda bill. If you could just read the heading from the ordinance itself.
I don't have the, I don't have.
You don't have the ordinance?
No.
Here you are. Give that to Mark.
All right, ordinance number 2014-17, an ordinance of the City of Vator, Washington, amending section two of ordinance 2014-01 by changing the set time for city council meetings from 6:30 PM to 6:00 PM on the second and fourth Thursdays of each month. That would so be changed.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor by Mark Fenison on ordinance 2014-17. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, all those opposed? Motion carries. Okay, the final thing is an update on the, on the attorney fees for the wastewater treatment plant and the, and the water negotiations with the county. The attorney gave us a 50% discount in our bill, so it saves us a ton of money. But we have to, from what Jill told me, we have to recognize it because we're going to have to juggle some funds to meet some monies because it's a little bit more than we had a set, had set aside even with this discount. I'll say something that somebody else wouldn't say, but he said he might even lower his bill some more if we push it. I can't help that, guys. We can save money, I'm going to go after it, so I would suggest we try that.
Can I ask that I give an explanation of what would need to be affected, is that okay?
Sure.
Okay, so what these attorney fees are, this is Joe Rayburger from Cascadia Law, or is that right, Cascadia Law? And he jumped in and helped us with the water receivership and then this blue array situation that came up at the end of last year. He was helping us with those. And so the mayor was concerned about us being able to pay all of those with last year's budget, so Joe held on to them, held on to it and kind of let them pile up until this year's budget. And so now we're addressing those, so we kind of have a big pile of them that all came at once. So the wastewater fees ended up, with a 25% discount, ended up at $6,200. And then the water receivership fees to finish up the receivership at the end of last year and the beginning of this year came to $3,059. And so we have the, in the wastewater, the $6,200, we have about $4,000 to pay for that, but we would need to take another $2,200 out of our sewer reserves that we've been putting aside. That's the only other place that we really have any funds. So this year, instead of being able to put $35,000 into our sewer reserves, we would be putting $32 and some change. And then for the water receivership, we didn't have a lot of funds budgeted for that. So really, if we could take the whole $3,000 out of the surplus money that, we have about $29,000, almost $30,000 left of that that hasn't been, council hasn't already put somewhere. And so, yeah, so that would leave us with about $26,000 in the surplus fund. So if council's okay with all of that, we'll go ahead and, and handle it that way. And if, if something else changes in the budget by the end of the year and we end up not having some costs somewhere, we'll absorb those funds first and we'll put the money back into these other two funds if we can. But we just don't know yet how it's going to end up at the end of the year, so.
If we can afford to pay it, I think we ought to pay it.
You got to pay it, you got to pay it.
Well, yeah, we have to pay it one way or the other, but it's just, we wanted you to understand how it was going to affect the budget to do it. So that there was transparency.
You don't need a motion on that, we can just say yes?
No, no, you don't, I don't need a motion, just if anybody has any questions or if you have any other grand ideas of how to pay for it, other than the way I've come up with.
Plead.
I guess we'll pay it.
Well, it's nice that we're in a position that we can pay it, so.
Well, if we think about what the alternative was, without having his help, we could have been paying a lot more money out to somebody else that we wouldn't have liked to do, so.
He did discount his bill quite a bit.
Yeah, he did.
Okay. That covers everything on my agenda, so is Steve?
One thing I didn't say, on our hot dog stand, our hot dog sale here on the second, we departed for $250.
Super.
Departed.
That's great.
When is the new, new time start for the council meeting, next, next meeting?
So we'll get to advertise in the next one? Yeah, it should be. I think it'll be, yeah.
That's enough time.
It has to be five days after, so next Wednesday and then five, yeah, it should be at the next council meeting.
It says in the ordinance, this ordinance shall be effective five days after publication, as provided by law.
I was just counting because publication would happen next Wednesday and then five days from, yeah.
Yeah, so we'd make it.
Yes, we should have it.
There was one thing about this ordinance on the meeting change, everything else that we're talking about. We're going to start that in September?
No, at the next meeting.
The last meeting of this one?
Yeah.
Yep.
Well, you better get some big flyers out.
Why?
You know what, we might have to wait till September.
Why's that?
Because we have a public hearing on the 28th, and we've already advertised it at a specific time.
Then we'll just wait.
But the public hearing won't be until 6:30, so it might be okay. But in any event, we'll, we'll figure out the details of that.
Okay. All right, if there's no other questions, any other questions? This meeting is adjourned at 7:22. This meeting is adjourned at 7:22.